Jackstown City Council Meeting, March 20th, 2025 is now called the order. HK, if you would, let's have a special prayer for Eddie Thomas.
To God, we stand to this afternoon, this evening, thanking you for the many blessings that you have afforded upon us as individuals and also in our city, our town. We thank you for the privilege of serving our community and being a part of the growth and making it such a good place to live. We lift up the health and life of Mayor Eddie Thomas. We pray for him and Glenn and their family. And we pray for healing of his spirit and body and mind and be with him as he walks through this terrible time. We pray for healing and give them comfort for what is in the future. We thank you for healing all of our lives and the way you protect us. Be with us in everything and send it unto us in Jesus' name.
Those allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Every once in a while, time to look over the minutes from the last meeting. I need a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Motion made.
Second. Motion by William Mullins, second by Daniel Law, in favor. Any opposed? First thing we have tonight is our audit presentation. And we'll let him speak to us and tell us all about our audit report and what else going on with the city.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
My name is Brad Haynes. I'm with the RHA CPAs in Lexington. We've been doing your audit for a number of years. I used to do your audit a number of years ago and then presented back to you. So happy to be down here again. So I'm just gonna hit some highlights here in the green balance piece. So the first piece of letterhead in here is already been an auditor before. In those first two paragraphs, we wish you to do an unmodified and clean opinion on your financial statements. The rest of this talks about the responsibilities for management of the financial statements. The second page talks about the auditor's responsibilities. It's where parts of the information. And then the third page talks about a government auditing standards report, which I'll touch on again here towards the end. So the next six or seven pages here are the management's discussion in the houses, which Tyler and Michelle Mullins puts together. I'm not gonna go through all of those, but that's a nice comparative, it's got some comparative information in there. So if you flip over to page, I'm gonna take you over to page 14. This is probably some of the easier statements to understand. Up towards the top, we've got cash and certificates of deposit. And all this is as of June 30th, 2024. So yeah, total cash and CDs, right out of a million dollars. Yeah, accounts receivable of about $300,000, compared to accounts payable there of about $25,000. We had total fund balance between the general fund and the Roth fund of about $9.2 million. On the following page, the top section, revenue. We had total revenues of about $1.7 million, reduced over $1.7, compared to total expenditures of under $1.6. For a total change in fund balance of positive $184,000 there. Following that is your statement deposition for your water and sewer funds, your balance sheet. So again, cash and CDs, you had just about $2 million on hand. You had accounts receivable of about $465,000, for a total current assets of about $2.5 million. If you go down to this bottom part there, under current liabilities, you see you've got about $800,000. So you had the ability to pay your current liabilities with your current assets about three times over. So that's pretty decent. On the following page, got your income statement. You had total operating revenues of about $4 million, compared to operating expenses of about $3.8. So you had operating income there of about $185,000. And then below that, you had some interest expense, interest income, and that sort of thing. On the following page is your statement cash flows. So the top section, you see you have positive cash flows from operations of $978,000. With that, you purchased equipment and paid some debt there of about $700,000. And below that, you had positive cash flow from dividends and that sort of thing. So overall, your cash increased for the year by almost $300,000 in the water and sewer funds. So following that are your condensed financial statements, which I'm certainly not gonna take you through every one of these. But if you flip over to page 23. Under the cash and investment section there, I will point out that all of your cash was fully insured or fully collateralized as you're required in KRX. So you're doing what you're supposed to do there. The next page has a summary of the different types of accounts receivable. Then the bottom, that is, talks about your capital assets for the general fund and the water sewers on the next page. We've got three or four pages there of long-term debt. Again, I'm not gonna go through all that. Then it starts getting into your retirement plan, page 27. You will flip over to page 37. I just want to point out a couple of things for your budget. So the bottom of page 37, your total budgeted revenue was $1.5 million. You received $1.7 million. So you exceeded your budgeted revenue by $186,000 there, so that's positive. The next pages are your expenses. So general administration was underspent by about $8,000. Police was underspent by about $15,000. The bottom of page 39, basically all the departments were underspent except for your capital and outlay. So that was, that's the only basically part that was overspent, and that was your capital purchases. I don't remember exactly what it was you bought and why it wasn't budgeted. But anyway, but your, overall, you were overspent by $150,000 compared to your revenues, which you received even more than that, so that's positive. Following that, we have more pension schedules, which I'm not gonna go through all of those. If you'll find, the next piece of letterhead, it's the last two pages. This is our report on your internal controls for financial reporting and compliance. And here, we don't give an opinion, but I am required to report anything that I find that might be a significant deficiency or material weakness to your internal control. So I'm happy to say that I don't have anything to report. So again, that's a clean report. Does anybody have any questions or want me to go back and touch on anything?
Do you have any questions on?
Yes, sir.
You leave.
That's the main thing. Motion accepted.
I need a motion to accept the budget as read.
Favor.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Always appreciate when we go and clean up.
Yes, ma'am. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. The next thing we have, last month, if you recall, I gave you all this, what our pay classes is and then what, a list of what we're looking at going to. So we, how, we had to read that ordinance tonight. Next month is when we take a motion on that, but tonight is just the reading of the ordinance of that new case yet.
So ordinance 2025-001. Orders update personal pay classification plan. Where does the city council, the city of Jamestown recognize that the city's personal policy and procedures pay classification plan must be updated from time to time or to remain current and to maintain an effective and efficient workforce. Now therefore, reordained by the city council, city of Jamestown, Commonwealth of Kentucky, that attached pay classification plan replace the existing personnel compensation plan and classification plan. That the personal policy and procedures and pay classification plan may be waived, altered, or suspended only by change of ordinance. This ordinance shall come effective after second reading publication requirements have been met.
So that's, next month we'll look at that. For motion of that ordinance.
Motion's next, oh, next month, yeah, okay.
The next thing we have, everyone here, I think you are that the drag strip was sold by the IDA. With us being parts of the IDA and the city of Russell Springs being a part of that also. It's required that the city, that the mayors, and the judge, and IDA all sign off on the sale. So HK has all the information. I guess they're, of what, I think right now they're putting a closing on or around April the 3rd on that property.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
That's what they thought at the IDA.
Okay.
But that can change. It's gonna be dependent on everything getting signed and everything getting back. But that's just an estimated date, but this is just what HK has, that we have to sign.
Mayor, that's actually what this is. There was an option granted to the city of Russell Springs, the city of Jamestown, and the industrial, and the fiscal court, a good business property. And it was good for several years, the 60 acres. Now there is a buyer from Somerset that wants to purchase, purchase it. So in order for them to purchase it, the city of Russell Springs, the county, and we have to sign a release of that option. So that's actually what this is. You're not, it's the same thing, but you're really not voting to sell it. You're just releasing your right to buy it.
Right.
And I thought like whoever was taking the minutes that already stated that way. That we're just releasing our option to purchase that airport property, the way that that right, which was granted was back in 2000. Whatever my glasses won't say here. So if you would, and I'm not conducting a meeting, could somebody make a motion to adopt this resolution to permit the mayor to sign this for a second and go over it? And that's what we'd be doing, and I'll go right to see the track.
And I think the guy I saw was there, that is who, I'm not sure.
Can't think of his name.
McLaughlin?
McLaughlin, that's your right.
That on the McNabbles, that was something. I believe the purchase price is $600,000.
$25,000.
Very true.
$625,000. $625,000. Does the IDA own it or do the, for government entity?
The IDA owns it. We filed a, no. The IDA, I mean, wait, we get straight. The county, no, actually, the IDA does own it. It was condemned by the county to be on behalf of the IDA. So that's who actually owns it. It's a little confusing. The county had, the IDA.
So the IDA will receive the entire?
Yes, because they lost, they paid for it. They had the money to buy. We vangmarked around in Bull County for several months trying to buy it outright. And they just shut us out of there. It was kind of a disappointing process, but just straw marmot it so that the ID did wind up with it. And so the option was for the cities to purchase it for whatever purpose we wanted. And that means, if that, if this is what the board wants to do, our portion of it needs to be released, and I think the rest of it will sign too.
And I think the IDA board, it took them a long time to get them to agree to even sell it.
Yeah.
They, how they had to go through the system.
Right, it was, it was.
So a long time.
The entire 60 acres in the city of Jamestown or part of it is, part of it?
The entire city, the entire city, 60 acres are in the city of Jamestown.
Okay.
Yes.
We annexed that. We annexed it immediately after.
I know there's been some questions about 40 acres being in or out or something.
I don't know about that.
No, but all the drag strip was in Dunestown.
He goes right up to French Valley Road near.
Yeah, it was annexed back.
Yeah, we done that right away.
It was, it was annexed in. I don't remember the details on it, but the drag strip property was annexed in.
Make a motion that the mayor sign.
Motion by Dwight to sign off on this partial release for IDA board to sell.
Second.
Second by William Mullins, favor.
Right.
Any opposed?
I'll go right to see.
And I'm not getting any of that because it's out of people's.
Thank y'all. I'll move this back to get your name.
Another thing that I just wanna throw out there that we, I, Wendy Markham had called me about the annual egg hunt. Community egg hunt is gonna take place. I believe it's April the 12th. And they asked for a $500 donation. That's to help buy prizes, and I think she said they're going to hire 13,000 days. And they're gonna buy gifts and stuff for the kids, and Russell Springs has committed to 500, she said. And so she has asked for us to give a $500 donation to help buy the gifts and the expenses for the egg hunt. That is April the 12th. It'll be, I think it starts around 11:00 or noon or somewhere around there. And then, of course, that night's gonna be the Kevin Williams concert also. So that's all happening April the 12th, but so.
Like a motion we can get to 500 also.
Motion three, need second.
Second.
Second. Again, all in favor? Any opposed? So we'll get 500 to that community. Another thing, just on my list, is the veterans' flags. Is it $100 that we charge for those? Hundred.
I think they're $100.
I think they're a hundred, because I thought they were more than that. I think, I thought they were a hundred.
They were, yeah. They're $100. Yeah, we got a little cheaper than that.
Yeah.
Not used to, yeah, more cheaper than what they were.
Yeah.
So we just need, if anybody knows anybody or anything, you know, we need to, if anybody wants to order those, we got them up now. Like I think we leave them about four years.
Will we go up to better, better than today? Yeah, but, you know, we run them every four years. We're, that's the way we read the, the last thing, every four years we think about.
So that's something, you know, if anybody has any questions or if anybody knows anybody that they want to do that, we need to get those orders in. Because Sean does those flags for us, and we need to get those in so they can get full, get up and get them up there. We do have little exciting news for Lake Fest. I'm coming, I took out my tablet. We do have tribute bands booked. And the first one that we have is, the name of them is Second Helping. It's the American Leonard Skinner Show. So we've got them booked for Lake Fest. And then the other one is gonna be an Alabama tribute to, and it's the name of that band is Boys in the Band. So we're trying to think of people that, groups that fit everybody. I don't know anybody that don't like Alabama, and I really don't know anybody that don't like Leonard Skinner. So you've got different age groups, you know, there that likes different stuff. But we just listened to different people and felt like those were two groups that would be good for everybody, that everybody could enjoy. We had such a good success last year with Journey and the Heart for You. I mean, we heard more response from that. And I think it was just good because you had different music and different entertainment instead of just one person. And then if you want to look at the list, you'll see why we're not looking at getting individual people, because the cost is astronomical anymore. And that's just to get even people that's been out there a long time. So with the tribute bands, we feel like we get a lot of good entertainment. Cost is good, and, you know, it actually seemed to go over really well last year. So we do have those booked. If you don't get those booked early, you don't get them. So we've already got those contracts in and got those booked. Also Marty Brown is gonna be here again this year. I think, you know, we've had a lot of people. Marty's been here a couple of years. And lots of people have asked for him to come back. So we try to, if people ask, it's something we can do, you know, he's willing to come along. Elvis will be here again this year. This is gonna be over at the smaller stage. Elvis will be. And then I think Anthony Hammond is planning on being here too. For, and then if y'all know anybody else, you know, anybody that wants to play on the small stage? And were we getting to that? We have to, we can't put any more people on the big stage. Because this Leonard Skinner group, I think from what I understand, there's lots of thin people maybe.
Thin people, stage to a time.
And they have backup centers and have lots of equipment, so you're gonna need lots of time with unloading and putting up equipment and.
And they're gonna handle free bird.
And the bar doors still on.
The bar doors still on. So Davy's done a lot of work on that, so appreciate Davy doing, getting all that lined up. And it's a, it's a lot going back and forth trying to, you know, get those worked out. So, but we have that, also for Lake Fest, we're working, hoping, we're thinking of trying to move the car show down to the Christian church parking lot to clear up kind of down that way where we can put more vendors and stuff, because we ran out of so much room. Having a place for vendors and hoping to keep it contained moreover at the Christian church around that area. And then we're talking to, is it Wayne Lynch?
Wayne Lynch.
About maybe, you know, before, in the past, they used to, like in White Palm, come around the square and everybody, they presented the trophies around.
After money.
Everybody liked to see. So we're asking if they would be in favor of going back to doing that, because we kind of have a little downtime there sometimes, and that way everybody could.
They used to, of course, the whole lake flowed through, you know, and over the years, it's kind of shrunk down.
That's the one that worked hard on it.
It did.
For, I mean, you, for months and months and months.
Absolutely, it did. And put a lot of time and work into it.
So, you know, if we can work that out, we just thought that would be good to bring them back around the square. Where everybody could see, you know, have, see who leaves the trophies and stuff like that. Because the way it is, it's kind of down there. People walk down there to see it, but then they don't hear, they don't want anything of that because it's just sporadic. So, but anyway, that's a thought. And then just a couple of things that I have. And then water tank, I went down, looked at it the other day. I don't think anybody's been down there, but it's.
It's amazing.
Yeah. It's, it's good. It's big. We're waiting, because we still have to paint the inside, paint the outside. What else, there, anything else left on that? And, you know, of course, they've got all the groundwork to do around it and stuff like that, as far as the tank itself. I believe it's down to just the painting and.
Yeah, they're running out of, like a stop work until, it looks like sometime in April. They'll, they'll start some side piping and then electrical work, and then they'll finish with their painting. And they're still gonna put the skater stuff on, paint disinfection.
So that's gonna be a big, big asset, I think, to people's water pressure and especially people in Valletta area. Some of them's never had no water pressure, so that should be a good asset. Last thing that I have, that I, is distribution building. I don't think anybody's had a chance to go over there. It's, the concrete's been poured, lots of work been done over there. And it's, the floor's all finished now, and the guys at the sewers went over there and grilled their old block and everything. And that saved us a lot of money off the initial deal of what that was gonna be. And I think if you look at, we had two estimates at the beginning, like one was over $100,000, one was over $200,000. Right now, we've spent 16, a little over $16,000. It's what we've spent, because the city's done the rest of the work. And we like the two ends, and we've, I think they're probably looking at maybe, maybe another $15,000 or $20,000. But that should be, I mean, it's a long shot from $200,000, so.
I'll tell you what, we're blessed to have good workers and good in a lot of things. They're able to do a lot of work and save us money like that.
Well, just like, you know, them, I think the difference in that field, just for putting the floor and by them concrete and, I mean, by them doing the gravel and wheelbarrow and all that, dropped it down from $6,000 to $1,500, I think. So, you know, you save money on what they have here and there. Makes a big difference, so. But it's all kudos to all the, everybody that's involved there, working on that and doing their part to save, save money for the city. That's all I have. Anybody here have anything that they want to talk about?
I would like to address appropriate issues.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Which I bought some property on Murphy Lane, off of Murphy Lane, on Rosapoy. I've got, which the road, I'm sorry, I've got some pictures of y'all kind of on the road. I've tried to take them and print them off. I should make everyone a copy. But my issue is the street that comes down through there upon Rosapoy, it shows on the map that it comes off of Murphy Lane, down to my property, turns back on the duck and circle. So when I built my new house, I'm trying to get an easement, which is a, it's an easement, and no one knows if it's a city street, county road, no one knows what it is. I know the city had invested in some chipping seal whenever Brooks was here, I think, down so far. And then they stopped. Down the left side, there's four individual lots before they get to my property. And then when we start my property, it takes off down through there. But there's a lift station at Will Dunn's house where the street comes down. And I've asked Will, because Tyler, I talked to him, and we have a couple of different options to either come down upon Rosapoy or try to cut across at Will's. And one day this week, that got shot down real quick. Will let me know real quick that we weren't gonna do that, that he hadn't opened that up. And I think there'd been an issue on Bonnie Drive once before about, it was, it was a city street that was gravel, that they were wanting paved. And I think it was told that if we're gonna. And I think it was told that if we're gonna pave this, it's gonna be a city street all the way through or something, or private drive. And they agreed to let the city come in and tie Murphy Lane to Duck and Circle. I guess, is that the name of the road? It's Farrods Drive.
Farrods going down Duck and Circle.
Yeah, it's Farrods. So I think the city invested in that blacktop up through there. So what I had asked was for the city, which the drainage tile at the bottom is an issue because it's coming off of Farrods Drive. All that water's coming off the road, down to the lift station, which during the big rains the other day, the lift station was flooded, shut down. Theseys coming out of it, coming across my drive and washed gravel out. I put four hundred dollars worth of rock on the city side or the county, whoever owns the road. And as the pictures you can see going down the drive, the water just packs the rock. It's, and I can't, I don't want to to keep investing four hundred dollars in loading rock. So I took some rough pictures for y'all to kinda see what the drainage looks like, the issues that I'm dealing with there, which I talked to Tyler about, say, trying to save the city some money if we could come back off Farrods Drive and just come across. It would be a short distance over to my property where when Gaddis comes, when I start my paving, that I can just tie into whatever the city agrees to do there and go. But like I said, when I talked to Will, that was a big no. He's, he don't own any part of that, he said he hadn't agreed to. But I think from the get-go, the utility easement or the protection easement that they had around all of that when they developed it was supposed to go away whenever the city done Bonnie Drive. And I don't know the details of it, it's just kinda conversation, talking. And now they're kinda boning up on me and saying, no, we're not gonna do that. And it's not my obligation as a neighbor to go argue with him about who's gonna do what. But the reason I'm here, which I've talked to Tyler and I've tried to get the agreement that she'd like me, we, we meet, pass on the roads and we wave and we talked about it a couple of times. And I told her that I would rather just come to the meeting, let you all decide, you can drive down and look at it. There's a bunch of issues like the road tile, I don't care, me personally, to fix the tile, dig it out, have a bigger tile put in, try to straighten the dits, get the road ready for asphalt. And then if the city wanted to do what they done on Bonnie Drive, incorporate that in or if it's already in the city, could go ahead and get it paved. Which you can see a lot of the potholes and stuff in it where Kristen and I are coming in and out and just getting worse. I fill them up, the first rain, the gravel's out, it's right back to potholes. And with the cost of what it's gonna cost me to do my drive, I'm not interested in spending another fourteen or fifteen thousand dollar payment on a city street that's not on my deed, that I don't own, that anybody can come down, turn around in my yard and head back out. So that was, I guess, in a roundabout way, I know the pictures are not real good, but I'm asking if you all have got time during your day, if you're out, you're more than welcome to drive up, drive down Pondrosa Pike. You can see the way the water washes and it's all from higher ground that's probably off city streets and city drainage. You all can make your own mind up, someone can get back with me, let me know what you all can do or would do to help me. And then I told Tyler what I would be willing to do as far as maybe rocking the road, getting it out to forty foot, the, the tile, maybe splitting cost, whatever it takes. But, which, my place is in City Limits, I pay city taxes. The lots on the left, there's four lots down through there, I think, that are in the city limits. And then I'm just gonna try to mirror what happened on Bonnie Drive. Yeah, I just feel if you do it on Bonnie Drive, you can do it on Pondrosa Pike because they're both, I think, labeled. And then the map that I have and that Tim has shows the street coming down and turning and going back through the lift station and kinda makes a loop back to Farrods Drive. And then like I said, I've talked to Will about that and that wasn't the most pleasant conversation. It's, no, we're not gonna do that. And like I said, I'm not there to argue with him and I'm not gonna argue on behalf of the city.
I know, she's, that lift station, I don't know if that's the exact drive or not, if that was just built for the lift station. You know where I'm going with that.
The road goes in and the blacktop ends in the lift station is the, I guess the word I would say is half-cocked on the blacktop. Where I think, I don't know what the city owns, I don't know what the, the easements are on that. I know like when I worked for the RSCC, we had utility easements on all of our lines, power poles. You had thirty foot, if we built a primary line, you had fifteen foot on each side. If we wanted to cut to reach, whatever we wanted to do was an issue. That if you sign that utility easement just to put a pole there, we're, you're giving that to us. It's still your land, you can use it as you please. But if we need to come in and cut an access road, cut rightway on it, whatever we need to do. But like I said, I don't know what the city's agreement is. I know that Will, from the get-go, had that utility or.
He had a five-foot easement, I think.
The easement around his property to make sure.
Cause I went through all this whenever I built the house that I sold Terry Waddell, trying to get a water line.
Yeah, and so that's kinda my issue with him now. And I just wanted to run it by you all and like I said, if you've got time, I would like for all of you to come down there and look and see. I don't think you're taking my word for it. I want you to look for yourself, but I can't keep, like I said.
Pondrosa's, the road comes down and goes.
It's right past Rodney Johnson's Little Apartments, it turns right off of Murphy Lane. And it goes down and then the property that I bought, it stops there right at the road.
You bought what used to be.
It, it come from Tyler.
Yes.
Who, who developed that?
See, I'm not sure.
Bought the original subdivision, Murphy's farm, is the Murphys down the whole farm.
Right, right, Roy, Don, Don.
They done it if they sold it to the Murphy family.
See, we're going through, we've been through something, something similar to this with Sandy Flanigan out there, you know. Of course, you know, so I mean, but I know.
I think that road you're talking about that comes down behind Will's house, comes down to the lift station, it only goes, it's supposed to go to that five-foot barrier is what I always thought.
Yeah, the five-foot barrier is what Will says, that's the stopping line. Until, my understanding, until they made the agreement on Bonnie Drive, that if we're gonna pave this for Bonnie Drive, for you all to come up through here, we're gonna tie the two streets together and the, the, the property easement then is supposed to go away. And then like I said, it, that's not for me to argue with him and I'm not gonna go, he's my neighbor, I've got to live next to him. His health's not good and I'm not going over there and upset him.
Cause Bonnie Drive's the one that goes back up.
That goes in between Jared's shop and the house that Darlene and Anthony built. And that was their drive coming off.
Comes back with five feet in the front before you start the rail.
That is true.
Of course, I can't speak, I wasn't here back then.
I wasn't either back then, but I'm with you talking.
When Sandy Flanigan was built down there, their, our agreement with them was here. They blacktopped, you know, the developers.
Right.
And then we, they can, you know. I don't know what was said, you know, back then, of course, when, when, when all that was developed.
Of course, that was a total different development, Farrods was because that was actually that farm that was developed. For the big argument that happened then was to do with water.
If I can get that survey and it turned over to me where I can put a gate on it, I don't care if it's paved it and put a gate up there and it's my land. The only problem is it's gonna cut the four lots off that, what's his name?
Bart.
Bart, that Bart owns, that, that's the, that's supposed to be the drives that go into those four lots off of.
That comes off Murphy Lane.
That comes off Murphy Lane, where you can turn right and go to Pondrosa. And then that's the, the street that you're supposed to be able to access these four lots down through there, which I've tried to buy to him and he said he don't wanna sell them right now, but if something happened to him, I would have first option at them. And, but if I can't buy them, then you're gonna have other folks that's gonna come in, that's gonna pay more than me. And then if I pave that road, they're gonna be using my drive. And that's what I told Tyler and everybody else that I've talked to.
So it's never been chipped and sealed down through there?
It has been chipped and sealed to the top of the hill. I think Brooks done that, either Brooks or Matt.
Waddell did that.
Brooks did that.
Brooks did that.
I thought Waddell did all that, all the way to the creek.
He ran down from Murphy Lane, I don't know. Brooks done from Murphy Lane to the top of the Murphy Lane.
He chipped and sealed it, it's never been blacktopped. When does it become a city road?
By ordinance, when it's twenty foot wide, two foot molding on each side and blacktopped.
That's when it becomes a city road. So whose road is it at this point?
Tell us what no one knows. That's where I'm at my point, because if I spend an extra twenty thousand dollars to blacktop from the creek up, then I'm not gonna turn a no to the city. I'll keep it for myself, rocking gate it to keep people from diving down and then turning around in my yard instead of coming up to my house and turning around. That's the issue with it, but on the map, it shows that it goes down, turn right and comes back out at the sewer station as Pondrosa Pike and then ties into Farrods Drive. And I wish I would've printed, I wish I would've printed that offer, you could've seen it. I know it's on the PVA map like that.
And would be a lot simpler if it was like that.
Yeah, I mean, you could just make a loop, but then you gotta deal with Will. And, I mean.
It's like you say, though, what was decided whenever the Bonnie Lane was, or Bonnie Drive or however it is.
And I would rather have it like that, honestly, because if people come in, they don't have a place to turn around.
Did they do a way with the five foot?
And when you go down there, you go in the house and there's one place.
Get that done or?
I'm gonna say it's still on the deeds.
The five foots?
I mean, that never changed. That was agreement, it was in here when Will brought those plats, it was in here. He brought them in here and sat down here on the balcony and they went through and showed the city streets. And they said they had an agreement then to, back then, to, that Bonnie Lane was a city street. That's what he said, she said, so I don't, I wouldn't hear, I had no idea. But they said that they had an agreement then that was not to be blacktopped then because nothing was on it. At that point, Evan had built a house on it, Anthony was building his house on it. So when we got the houses built, the council voted to lay the blacktop through Bonnie Lane. And I was like, let's, if we don't go all the way through the Murphy Drive or Murphy over there, then it's basically a private drive. So he let us cut it all the way through Murphy Lane, there was a circle in there. We now have sewer coming from Murphy onto that because we've got E1 stations on Rodney Johnson's places that come up and tie in on Bonnie Lane. And he, he let you, take, your, your sewer comes into their system right there.
My sewer goes to that lower station, then there's a ten-inch high-pressure sewer line that we actually found that no one knew where it was at as I was cutting my yard down. And to reiterate what you said, I wanna go back to y'all, the city employees. I couldn't ask for better people. Those guys come up there and they work for half a day switching over the water lines, tying everybody on Murphy Lane onto a new four-inch line to help that pressure down through there. They kept my water line off of my property line where I'm on the two-inch from the city park around because there was a pressure issue. And I wanna make sure that all of you all know that you've got great employees, take care of them, they deserve it. I go to work every morning at the creek, I send them around the square cleaning, working. They, they, they're good employees. Don't pay them for granted, absolutely, do not pay them for granted, but.
We do have good employees all the way around.
Every one of them. But that's my issue with the road and like I said, I don't, honestly, no one knows. And I don't know if it's something that maybe H K can find out. If it's something that we can come to some kind of agreement, I'll fix the tile, I'll fix the drainage, I'll try to fix from the sewer station where the water's coming over off Farrods Drive. Because that's when I always get an issue and I'm not gonna spend thirty thousand dollars on blacktop and make it up on the morning after the big rain and go down there and my blacktop's tore up and my tile was down at Lilly Creek. I, that's not acceptable. I don't have that kind of money and I just, but I want it to be right. And I know Gaddis has come and Joe Todd told me he would be there sometime at the first of May. So that gives me a little bit of time to try to get this organized and get a big enough tile in. And then from the sewer station, the erosion is horrible and, I mean, it needs to be fixed regardless. It's whether somebody's there or not.
And the lift station is?
From the lift station down through the little thicket, across my drive and then down between me and Bards and then even the twenty acres that I own on the left side, down through there. It's, which it's all hollows and hills then, but just the erosion there for the lift station is pretty bad. I know there's.
Is that maybe the inflow, Tyler, or is that?
Huh?
Is the lift station right over, cause the inflow when it rains or is it just?
That, that would be what, what it was on, I mean, they're, they're gonna overflow everywhere on six inches rain. But, yeah, but that, what he's, that, that water's coming down off Farrods and when it comes down off Farrods and get to the lift station, it, it has to make a bend, like a bend left and a bend right and it just, it's just. That picture shows it where it makes that little swag up there.
And then the street itself, the ditches where it's just been like, yo, where, and I'm gonna say where it was chipped and sealed and it was just like, yo.
Oh, yeah, that's kinda, you're talking about.
Then I get everything off of Murphy Lane and off Rodney's too, that's all going to that pile and that crossing. And I can't, I can't afford to keep up with it, I'll be honest with you. I can't afford to dump every time it rains, four hundred dollars gravel down through there. And then Tyler work it in and keep it where I can actually get in and out. And if I need Jeff or Nate, which is somebody like that, if I'm in the city limits and I call 911, regardless of who it is, firehouse, I would like for them to have an access road that they can get down and not have to lock the hubs in, which you can see the one picture. It's, it's not very good and I've, I've tried my best to fix it and make it sustainable until I get some kind of answers on what the city thinks, what the county thinks and, I mean, I don't care to talk to Terry, he's my neighbor. I can ask him what he thinks, what he would be willing to do. But I'm just thinking that I'm in the city limits, we pay city taxes. I think on my check, I pay city taxes while working in City of Jamestown and, and like I said, if I need Jeff or somebody, I wanna make sure that they can get down through there and not drag the lot by the vehicle.
Like I, like I said, there, the thing that bothers, that, that comes to my mind though, that I worried about, not knowing where, how that came about, but it was, you know, like I said, it's Sandy Flanigan, you know. There you've got, we've got minutes, I had to come back and look at them actually because I was questioned by, by them about the blacktop and, you know, and I, and I had to come back and double check the minutes to make sure that, that's what it was and it was, they built the, uh, they built it, blacktop it and then we would take it in, you know. And of course, we have nothing, there's nothing there, Chris, it's for us.
On the Pondrosa?
Yeah.
No, no, it's, it's never, it's never.
Before it was ever taken in the city. All that subdivision was cut up on that, way before it was ever in city limits.
That's what he was saying about Bonnie Lane when it came in here, that it was, it was agreed upon way back then to.
That was in twenty twenty-one is when the city, because we had actually built our place down there. And they done that while we lived down there, that was in, I think, twenty twenty-one. And then like I said, it would be a lot easier on me if you made the agreement with Will. I'm fine with coming across the sewer station. I would rather come down Pondrosa Pike just because there's four lots off of it and it feeds my house also. But if you, if you agree to do that with Will and give up the five-foot border around that to blacktop his road, then somebody needs to go down there and tell Will, I'm sorry, you're gonna be mad, but that five-foot border that you've got don't exist and we're gonna bring this road through here because literally it's for me to that door. And we can add on to that blacktop, I can turn my right way up the hill and tie into my blacktop and it's gonna cost the city, what, a thousand dollars? We'll have to move a little electric pole and I mean, I don't even care to do that. But I'm not gonna go down there and argue with him, that's not my job. And I'm not gonna upset the man, he's an older gentleman, his health's not good. And it's not worth fifty thousand dollars for me gonna make you mad and upset you, it's just not. But if, if we're gonna play apples to apples, something's gotta give because like I said, I can't afford it. I, I wish I could, if I could, I just wanted blacktop and be done with it. Cheer. Hey, I'm a single dad, I've gotta feed this thing right here. But, but that's why I wanted to come and talk to you all and first and foremost, I wouldn't brag on me. first and foremost, I, I wouldn't brag on the, the city employees. They come over there, they, they worked hard, they got the water issue fixed for everybody on Murphy Lane, for me. They done a great job. Super proud of them. I actually bought them all once. You had a place the other day they were in. And just, I can't thank them. Those guys are nothing. Like I said, I see it every day. I go through, I'm here, I work with them. Take care of them. And then, one other, I want to ask, one, H K might be an answer this real quick. Uh, John asked me why they didn't put the drag strip up for public sale. Just sell me that right. Can you answer that question?
John.
Adams. He would have liked to have had it.
Well, it wasn't required that they do that. I think probably there was probably some negotiation made with somebody running interference, you know, for the sale. I don't, I couldn't, I don't know.
I know, I got into the IDA order meeting and asked you that. Yeah.
So their own government, uh, essentially they can just kind of do what they want with what they got, even though the city's pouring in for that and got that bill done.
They can, they can, well, it wasn't city money that bought it.
Okay.
It was IDA money that bought it because they, they had investments and transferred property and all those things through the years. So the city never put any money into that.
Okay. Well, he had asked me, whenever he had found out everyone up for sale, he's like, why didn't we buy that? I'm like, didn't know it was sale, didn't know they could sell it. I thought the way that they, that it was acquired, that it would always be your property.
It was bought by A, IDA money, which is not, we don't, we don't, they have their own budget and actually earn quite a bit of money along the way. Selling property, Bruce, all of the industrial parks, all those things that generate some money for them. So they're not required to put up a condo option, you know?
Okay. Well, I, and I, since that was mentioned, that's all I want to ask.
Who's John?
John Adams, that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I understood that they had another, that there was like a couple of different people that had asked to buy and they, maybe it's a decision by the, whatever they offered in negotiations was what I understood. The IDA order.
I would just assume that property like that, that you got two city governments that are having to sign off to sell it, that they would have to sell it.
No, that's not what happened. We did not sign off to sell it. We signed, we, we had an option to buy it. The cities had an option to buy it.
You signed up your rights.
What we did was remove this option meaning it was opened up for other parties to buy it.
And the only reason, like I said, it was brought up, John asked and I thought, well, we're here.
Well, and also it would be used for a drag strip and I think this guy that the volunteer promised to use it as a drag strip. They were using this big economic development, you know, the chamber congress got involved and I don't want to talk in front of camera, you know, too much, but those of you who have been watching Facebook, it was a promise that it would be used for economic development as far as the drag strip was concerned.
Well, and we built the power line when I was at R C C. I engineered all that out a few days ago. Which I was told by fourteen different people that Act Harvis was coming and all.
Well, that was.
There was a whole array of things that was going on and the next thing you hear, they sold it. That's why.
It was, it was a hope of the IDA that that would be used for maybe end up more, a different type of industrial development. It ties all the ways and brings it down to airport rather than.
Got it.
And uh, that would have been a wonderful location, but uh, John can still buy this guy, maybe?
Yeah, true.
He might be willing to get rid of it.
He, he was just asking because, which we buy, we try to buy whatever we can buy, get cleaned up and what we can do with it. And he had asked about that and since you brought it up, I thought, since it was on the meeting agenda, my.
Oh, that, I just want to clear, the city is, is not selling it. It's not owned by the city. It was purchased by the IDA through their money.
Okay.
And their money come from different sources, but it was like, no city money has gone into, we, we used to contribute to IDA so much a year maybe?
Yeah, we used to owe about five thousand dollars a year.
We don't do that anymore.
I think that was, I was back in Brooks days on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think we've done a lot of that.
But I think that Act Harvis was gonna be a part of the seed academy. And then I think Act Harvis ended up.
Summer City. Oh, yeah.
So that kind of brought that out of the, and I think that was gonna have to do with the seed academy that they're building out there now. That the IDA board was doing.
Well, and like I said, John had asked me, which like I said, we're gonna try and buy some stuff down through there and it's just hard to get answers and so,
Yeah.
Whenever something like that comes up, he's always.
He may still be able to buy it. He might be, be glad to get rid of it. He had, he had signed the deed, yeah.
I was like, he's in Greece. He'll be back Monday. I'll ask him. But he won't, but he won't. But uh, that's all the business that I, like I said, first and foremost, I want to thank the city employees for the hard work that they've done and ask you all about the road and consider it, see what you come up with and I guess Regina should get back with me or.
I will. I just, I actually drove up there not before last or in the afternoon, but I didn't know where the road was. I went all out to where Rudy Chapman lives and turned around there. And I thought you were right there on the main. I didn't realize where your other farm was immediately.
No, when you turn on Pondrosa Pike, you gotta go down. You can pretty much go right behind Will's house.
Okay. I know that, is it that brick house there? Uh, you turn right beside it, sitting on the ride?
It's back some, you know where Rodney Johnson's little apartment, his apartment, turned right.
Right there? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed that turn. I went all the way down.
It's a pondrosa bike. It does.
I went all the way down and turned around at Rudy's there, into the road. I said, well, I don't even see another barter meeting out here, but I know he's built one. It's a barn though, isn't it? In that barter meeting? So I wasn't sure where it was. But yeah.
City's true. Pondrosa Pike. Thank you guys. Thank y'all for listening.
We're looking at all that and um, maybe if you can go out there and look at that.
Oh, I know what it looks like.
Yeah.
I don't ride outside. I'm not here too much to know what it looks like.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Back watch out for Jim. State law.
We just need to uh, from what I understand, he's wanting the road blacktopped. But what about the road town? I was kind of confused with.
I, I think he would, the way I talked to him, he'd do some, he would prep it, he would prep it, put his tile and everything in.
Are we talking about all this road area, this long road?
See if that or fight with Will. See if you don't, if you do the fight with Will to come in, you don't have that much blacktop tax to law. No. That's the main, that's the road he's talking about now to him.
But that's why you don't want.
Unless you can get Will to agree.
Everything right here, uh, he's blacktopping from around here. He's probably spending, I don't want to speak for around twenty, twenty five thousand dollars for blacktop himself.
I think we'll go.
But he's wanting the city to blacktop.
You're gonna have to go green.
I wasn't a volunteer for nothing.
Uh, you made a jump. It's. I saw the Gaddy, I've been on it. It's fourteen eight, fourteen eight eight.
To blacktop that?
That's at twelve foot wide. Well, you can't take it in twelve foot wide. So he.
And is that good? They choose their own way?
No, that's what I'm saying. He said he'd prep it if we, if we blacktop and take it in. That's what he was saying. But when they gave me the, when they gave me the bid, I saw the bid. That's seventy foot wide going off Murphy, twelve foot wide going down. You have to, you have to be twenty foot wide, two foot molding on each side. Oh, that's a question then. There, that, I'm gonna say those easements were showing the deeds. When, when, when the council took the, when the council blacktop Bonnie Lane in twenty twenty one, somewhere around in there, I don't know exactly when it was. When they blacktop Bonnie Lane, it was just basically an agreement that we're gonna cut it through Murphy Lane. That's still, I, I don't know. I don't have, my property is in the middle of everything. So I don't know exactly where, I, I would say that three foot easement, I think it's three foot, is all the way around that property and I'd say it's on every deed that's going around the property.
That there's an easement?
Yeah. So if that easement's around.
He always told me that they own it.
That's why, that's what I, that's what, yeah.
But they sit down and say, like, will they get a tax bill on?
I would assume that three, three foot is all the way around that property. I don't know that. That's a, I, I don't have a, I don't, my property's not touching any of that, so I don't have the deed that says anything about it.
H, would that be an eminent domain thing? Would that be an eminent domain thing?
What's that now?
To where, right there where the lift station is, you could just take the road straight on through there?
Over to Dunton.
Over from, well, from like there at that corner there at Will's and go straight across there.
Crossing over the place that Will won't let him go?
Yeah. Couldn't you do an eminent domain on that?
Good, but you'd have to pay him for it. What's, what would be the damage of, you know, what's that was put up there to keep people from going through for the very purpose of it?
Well, it was put up because they argued at the time when they done it over water lines that the city wouldn't help with any water lines at that time. And that's the reason they said, well, we, we've got to put them in. We keep five foot all the way around so that nobody can tie onto our water lines that develops around.
I said, I, I was a baby when that happened.
Well, I was too, but I've had to listen to this at Derek's many times in the past.
What a discussion.
Yeah. That's the reason I went to bed early. I could do it always.
I bet.
You go straight to heaven.
But it, it could be an eminent domain. I'm not, I'm saying it's just.
I just fear that would be the easiest way.
Well, it wouldn't be easy. I mean, you'd have to go through lawsuits in the domain and find a lawsuit against the property owner. And you might have to sue the whole subdivision. Because that was put there allegedly and it fit everybody. I don't even know how many people are in there.
Quite a few people at Murphy Lane, yeah. I mean, there's those stukses there.
How many people behind the barrier, I guess is what I'm saying in that development.
Well, that would be all, yeah, all of us, I mean.
Well, that wouldn't be where you'd be running into them in the domain, would it? That would be the, the eminent domain thing. It would affect more of the Farrows people, wouldn't it?
I don't know, but I mean, if you're gonna cross across a, a, a perimeter that was put up there to keep people in or out, you would have to condemn it and pay somebody something, you know, if they wouldn't give it to you, to, to, to take you to cross through there.
Probably didn't know how long Farrows Drive is. Would be a good place to start. I don't know that, but like, if you pull the city street and have what the mileage point on Farrows is, run it down through there because it may stop well before that lift station anyway. We may have, we may have blacktopped that lift station or whenever we done it for benefit of the city of Jamestown and extended it on after that lift station. Farrows Drive may stop at, at the corner of Dunton and Farrows. I don't know.
Does it, does it change? Is it, is it circles around?
Goes with that circle.
Yeah, that's it. So, yeah.
Yeah, so good. So I, I mean, you would have to know mileage points from one twenty seven out to whatever, whatever the city street, the CS number gives a mileage point. And then you could run Will to find out exactly where it stops. And it may stop well before that. The city street may not, may not even go back to the car anyway. I don't know.
I, so what do we need to do to give him an answer for what he's, what, is where I'm at because whatever we need to do, we're gonna have to give him an answer. So what do we need to do at this point?
That'd be a good place to start, wouldn't it? Seeing how far that street goes back.
Well, that would be if you're looking at cutting down Farrows. Yeah, that, I mean, that would probably be a starting point and then going the other way, you just gotta have to ride up there and decide whether you're gonna take the city street. Is it gonna benefit, is it gonna benefit to take the city street in? He's built up. I don't, I don't know. I honestly have no idea, but I don't know what he's gonna pay taxes on, on that. And then what's gonna happen for the four lots that's wanting to live there? I mean, there are gonna be four more houses just like that, set up like.
He could buy them and never develop them into anything.
Yeah, that's, that's the lots of, that's what happened with Murphy Lane to begin with.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, we didn't run water out of Murphy Lane or it would have been developed a hundred year ago.
So my question is.
That's on you, on you.
I mean, what, what needs to be done to make a determination as to what we're gonna do? He wants us to blacktop the road, so we've got to answer that. Are we gonna blacktop the road? What do we do if we're not gonna blacktop the road? Or what position does that put us in? If we do blacktop the road, what position does that put us in with everybody else that wants to really blacktop? So there you go. I mean.
Well, so I mean, that's what I had to check while I was in his land and except blacktop, but the agreement was that they blacktop it and we take it in.
Then we take it in, which that's an ordinance. Right. That's an ordinance that, you know, it would just get grown once it's blacktopped.
That's, and that's what's sitting there right now. Those are two Kansas city streets right now in the river bros. Everyone on it. It's, I mean, it's, it's kind of the point they're gonna act and blacktop them at some point.
So how did, how did those people get into the, oh, I see what you're saying.
That was their agreement to blacktop it.
Yeah, because they haven't been too blacktopped. But once they got so many houses.
Yeah, they didn't want to put blacktop on it. And that was the whole, that was the agreement with Bonnie Lane supposedly. They didn't, there was no reason to waste the money on blacktop then with nothing was there.
Well, I think someone sent this land in though, they didn't.
They didn't look up to blacktop that there was X amount of houses.
Yeah.
Because there's gonna be trucks and everything out there the whole time houses were being built, so that's gonna keep the road forward. So they had so many houses and they blacktopped it.
I wonder if Bonnie Lane, was that written there or was that just an agreement? Blacktop then?
It was an agreement that was done in the council. He brought the plaque in and he, he had said that they, the city had took it in a long time ago. There was, it's not, it didn't have a CS number or no, I mean, there was nothing on it. You know what I'm saying?
I remember this, I had a discussion with him. But maybe that that was, that their easement around it was done away with because of blacktopping at us through that point.
I mean, that's what was talked about. But like I said, if it's on those deeds, it doesn't matter. Doesn't really mean much, you know what I mean? A handshake on wheel oven when it's on, when you got something else on there.
Deeds are being hiding, guys.
Yeah.
Maybe you need to check that length first, I guess.
I'll pull the CS number and length on Farrows and I'll find out exactly where it goes.
And then from there, what do we do?
Discuss with Will. Somebody needs to. About first going ahead and taking it straight on.
Let me find out if it does go that far.
Yeah, the double lift bar, you know, where it kind of out, yeah. I mean, and then we're gonna have to look at taking the rest of that road in. And like I said, it very easily could, could stop right there at the curb when we blacktopped it for the benefit of the city. That way we could get to the lift station.
It's supposed to go all the way to, to the five foot barrier is what I was always.
It showed was on that map. I didn't see the map Brian's talking about. I mean, I, I don't know what that is.
But I know the tone that he's talking about.
It showed the highlighted ramp on all the way down and hitting, hitting that lane over there and going up. That was given, Pondrosa Pike was given that as a nine one one address. I mean, our reason, I know it was owned it, but it wouldn't. I don't know what it is. It hadn't have an address on it. That's where Pondrosa Pike came from.
So you blacktopped it off there?
I didn't, I didn't, uh, what did I make the money out of? Yeah, I did. Yeah, on that land or something. Um, I didn't, uh, I didn't name that. My, my mom dead on, didn't, didn't any on it before they did. And then I bought it off my dad. But yeah, it's, they, it, it didn't have a nine one one address until my mom dead got it and they, that, they put a trailer back around. That's where my brother lives.
So then you had to tag nine one one address.
That's, that's where the Pondrosa Pike comes from.
So you're gonna find out about Farrows, how far that it's a city street. And you will need to come in right. So let me know when you find that out and we'll see what we do next. And then, because I, I don't, I mean, I'm lost as to what needs done there. I'm not, I don't, I mean, I don't know what, we've got to find out what needs done and then because we gotta be able to give an answer. But we've got to give a right answer.
See, what I don't understand is when you're going around through, and you cross down that other street, they let a road go through there. When did that all happen? Did they let that happen or did somebody just take it down through?
I, I got no idea. They've done, there's two roads that cut out of that subdivision. One's the Y street and one is Bonnie Lane. So there's two roads. I understand why he would buy it because it's right next to his house. He's not seeing the other two. Uh, but like I said, I don't know what's on the deed until I have no idea.
So Will's not on the road to come right back?
That's that's what I was.
Go right back as soon as you're on.
That's what I said yesterday. I didn't I didn't know. I'm I'm not. Will's going back there. I'm not. I'm not talking to him, so.
All right, let's find out. Let's start from here and find out and then we'll go from there. Anybody have anything else?
I do.
Okay.
I'm wanting to make a motion to go to executive session about some legal issues about another property.
Okay, I have a motion for Mary to go into executive session. Second by the watch, so. For K R six one dash eight one L.
Sounds right.
We're going into executive session. I can see that a couple of glasses.